Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, May 1st, 2014. Please rise as Thomas Peckall, Temple Fire and Rescue, leads us in the invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Donna Finto, President of the Nurses Association District 7. Thomas?
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, please watch over the leaders of our nation, state, and city. Grant them wisdom as they make decisions for the good of our citizens. Comfort those who have been affected by the recent tornadoes and floods. Let them feel your love through the many responders and volunteers who were assisting them in their time of need. I pray for the safe return of the men and women in our armed forces who are a long way from home from their families. Father, thank you for the many gifts and blessings you have bestowed on us. May we each use these for the benefit of your people and your creation. I offer these prayers in the name of your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may do so prior to this meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. Mr. Chris Coleman.
Dear council members, good evening. I wanted to let you know that I received your letter and I appreciate you taking the time to respond. I, however, feel like your solution is unhelpful as I feel as if you're acting as if you have no power. I also don't feel like you publicly answered all of my concerns. I haven't reported my complaints to the police department because I don't feel like the chain of command is trustworthy, and I also don't feel like they would do anything. I say this because the leadership still yet has to serve true justice for my friend CJ Grisham. All they did was trump up bogus charges because they'd rather do that than admit any wrongdoing. I've been told that walking down the street simply allows me to be a victim for being stopped and searched. I must ask, are we in Washington? I fought for my country, and I don't think I should be subject to this. The next thing I want to ask about again is the Judy Morales scandal. I mean, the deadline is fast approaching, and I feel like she's going to take back her seat, and we would be powerless to do anything. I know that you have all addressed me personally, but I want to see that the Romanian councils stand together in the public's eye, letting them know that justice will prevail. If we are forced to have a corrupt member on the council, I will be forced to contact state and federal representatives to address the issues, and if I have to, I will contact the Texas Rangers and let them have a look at everything going on, and then maybe the dirt Judy Morales supposedly has will finally come out. I don't understand why the fee to look at Judy's scandal emails is $50,000. Another concern is that you haven't gotten the information I requested on the bulletproof vests contract y'all entered into with the DOJ, who is now attached to the Department of Homeland Security. You see, my biggest concern is that this is the start to a slippery slope. What I mean by that is look at the scandals out of Washington. Look at the BLM problems that are Congress... Look at the BLM problems that they've taken in Nevada and Texas. If we don't take a stand now and fight for our city, our states, and our country, we will lose it, and that truly will be a sad day. I hope this speech helps you to find in your heart to find the love that you have for your city and justice, and I hope that it helps you take a stand like Ted Cruz, Rand Paul, and Governor Perry for a law-abiding police force and law-abiding representatives of this country, this city, and this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mr. John Coleman.
Thank you. It's about the same thing about Judy Morales, that we think a lot of this is not going to go away until a lot of that is answered. My name is John Coleman, 206 North 7, Temple, Texas. This is some... This is an excerpt of some things from Lynn Willey at WB Daily, and he has taped everything in here, things that Judy has talked about, and she continues to stir the pot, so to speak, so I thought I would furnish you all with copies if you have not seen this of what is continuing. So from that, you may want to read those over and decide how you may want to reply about that, because it just... It's a festering subject, and it's going to continue that way until I think the rest of you take a tough stand on that, because I know that she wants to take her seat back and so on, so I suggest you take that serious, read it over, and make sure that the decision you made before still stands about that. And then the last thing I would like to ask about, the very last thing that's on the agenda, where you're talking about doing some financing down to the end of 2033, I believe that is. Let me pull that up right quick. My question about that, on how you can authorize an amendment on tax increment financing, reinvestment zone number one on the financing and project plans, about the tax increment revenue and what you have planned for that. About the... I understand expenditures for downtown improvements and public improvements and debt service, but as far as it going all the way from 2014 to 2033 of saddling future city councils with a debt that they may have no control over and things they may not totally agree with on some of the improvements and how it's going to bring about downtown expansions, that are needed, and I think for years, a little has gone on here and there, but until you address the economic value of how you're going to bring people in and have enough room to bring people into downtown, how you can sink money into it over a long period when you're going to have to address the parking issues and room to be able to bring people in tourism here into downtown. And so I'm asking you to give us a better idea about what your long-term plans are and the debt as far as that goes, how you can put this package together where it'll be a viable package and not throwing money down a deep well that will end up not benefiting the citizens in sad ways.
Mr. Coleman, your three minutes are about up, but there is a public hearing on that later if you'd like to speak in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Emily McBurney.
I have nothing to gain from being here. I don't want to be on the city council. I don't want to be a state representative or a state senator, so I have nothing to gain monetarily or... But my father-in-law at one time...
Ms. McBurney, would you mind stating your address for the record?
Would I mind stating what?
Your address for the record, I'm sorry.
It's Emily McBurney, and I'm from Temple, Texas. My address is 607 West Walker Avenue.
Thank you.
Corner of North 13th and West Walker. At one time, my father-in-law, Robert McBurney, Sr., was the mayor pro temp for several years, and he was on the city council for several years, and my brother-in-law, Wade Matthews, was on the city council for several years, and so I feel like I'm speaking for Mr. McBurney, Sr., from the grave. He would be here speaking if he could, and I also feel like I owe it to my brother-in-law, Wade Matthews, to speak on his behalf since he couldn't be here, just because I love Temple. I was born here. I was raised here. I graduated from high school here, as did my parents and my grandparents all were born here, so I love Temple. I want to see them have the best, and I want to say that I resent, but I question Mrs. Morales calling the city council to question because they insulted her on that day, the 17th. I was here. I was sitting right there. I didn't see any of you treat her with anything but respect. I heard each one of you ask her to resign politely, very respectfully, and, you know, I appreciated that because it was emotionally filled request, but I feel like she was lying when she said that, and, I mean, that wasn't the first lie, but I want to stand beside the council when they said that, and I also want to stand beside the Temple Daily Telegram since I'm a subscriber, and I don't feel like they did anything to besmirch her reputation. And I want to stand behind the council for what she said about you, and I want to stand behind Temple Telegram because I don't think they did anything wrong either, so... That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. McBurney. Mr. Milton Hensley.
My name is Milton Hensley. I live at 301 Mitchell Drive. What I want to visit with you all about is y'all are considering an ordinance to approve the keeping of swines, hogs, pot-bellied pigs, whatever you'll call them. What I would like for you to do, if... In the approving of this or not, if you do approve it, when a permit such as a liquor license is issued, you visit with the property owners around where this is going to be. The same thing when you have a person coming in that wants to build structures. You have the property owners around them to submit yea or nay. What I would like to do, or see that is done, is to have the same privilege to be able to... If a person next door to me is going to have one of these pot-bellied hogs, pigs, or swine, is that the neighbors within a block or whatever have the privilege of addressing whether they want this or not. I do not believe that the city council should determine what I want or what I do not want or some of the staff. I want to determine this myself. I grew up with hogs. I know what they are. I know what pot-bellied pigs will do. I have seen what they can do. I have seen people where they had a pot-bellied hog, pig, or swine, and they got tired of it. What did they do? They took it out and country released it. That's what they do, just like they do dogs or cats, whatever. I would like for y'all to consider the public if this is enacted. Let us make a decision of our own neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Ms. Maury Paul.
Maury Paul, 9016 Little Ridge. I didn't really prepare anything, just kind of a comment. Wanted to see if you guys can send me a letter if you have to, but some type of reassurance that Ms. Morales will not be allowed to resume her seat on the city council. You know, it's just one lie after another, and I have a full stack of documents here. You know, not once has she taken responsibility for any of her actions, and this clearly shows that she's not taking responsibility for any of her actions. I mean, she goes on to blame you, me, Joe Schmo, and pretty much, you know, everyone else, and not once has she ever apologized to me. I would like an opportunity at some point with all of you to sit down and kind of do a timeline of this. I really wish you guys would have come and asked me what my feelings were November the 9th, or, I'm sorry, November the 12th, when I brought this to the attention of the city of Human Resources and the county and then to the Sheriff's Department. I would have loved for you guys to have sat down with me then and say, "Maury, how do you feel about what a city council member has done to you, the position that she put you in, the things that she asked you to do?" You know, I lost my job, my livelihood, and now I'm being thrown into light as being a liar? Even you during the recall process, I never lied about any of you. I didn't like some of the things that you guys do or did or whatever, but, I mean, that's my right as a citizen of Temple, is it not? But I never told a lie, and I've been inundated here lately. It always seems like I'm a day late and a dollar short by people who she calls close friends. I've been inundated with emails and dirty letters. You saw what Sue Hamby sent you, Mr. Dunn. I don't know if you had a chance to kind of revisit that, but that's a slap to my face. I don't know what your response was, but, I mean, it hurts. You affect people's livelihood and business, you know? Nobody's asked me what I've done for the past 20 years. You only look at what I did for the past three years. You know, but I was not a caseworker by trade. I was doing actually what Schneider does for a living, and I was damn good at it. But, you know, I would love to talk to you. I would have loved for this to have been fixed back then, should've, could've, would've, but I need a reassurance from you guys that you're not going to lie or to come back. I do wish you luck on the Charter Revision Committee. I've stepped back. I've, you know, I'm more than willing to allow due process, but I need some reassurance because of blames being placed on everyone but her. She hadn't taken responsibility for her actions yet, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. R.D. Flippo.
I'm R.D. Flippo, Jr., of Versada at 309 South 31st Street. I come from four generations of railroaders, and I kind of want to address the blocked railroad crossings down here. I'd like to see it unblocked. The railroad would basically put Temple on the map, and blocking the railroad crossings down here is not going to silence the train whistles. By federal law, if there's any obstructions to the rails, train whistles have to blow, and I'd just like to see it uncovered and unblocked. Thank you.
Ms. Frances Fisher.
Hi. My name is Frances Fisher, 2504 Skyline Drive here in Temple, and I want to thank you all for your response to my questions at the last meeting that I talked. I would like to ask you all once again to either respond to me by letter. I know I did drop off a copy of the timeline in the Judy Gate scandal that was published on the Internet. I don't know if you all have seen it or not yet, but I dropped it off yesterday to you all so you all would have noticed of it. There's other things out on the Internet that have to do with that also, and as Maury Paul said, Judy hasn't taken responsibility for what she's done. She blames everybody else, which is her way of doing things. But what I would like to know is which one of you... Personally, I think, Danny, you're the leader, so you should... You're the mayor. You should step up, request an outside investigation, cut the head off of the snake, let's get this over and done with, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Now we have a proclamation for National Nurses Week. I think we have some ladies here that have joined us. Thank hell for being here tonight. If I could read the proclamation. Whereas the nearly 3.1 million registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession, and the depth and breadth of this profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings. Whereas the American Nursing Association, as the voice for the registered nurses of this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing delivery of primary and preventive care. Whereas a renewed emphasis on primary and preventive healthcare will require the better utilization of all of our nation's registered nursing resources, and professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients. Whereas the demand of registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population and the continuing expansion of the life-sustaining technology and the explosive growth of home healthcare services. Whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community, and the cost-effective, safe, and quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an ever more important component of the United States healthcare delivery system in the future. Whereas the city of Temple, along with the American Nurses Association and the Texas Nurses Association District 7, have declared the week of May 6th through 12th, 2014, as National Nurses Week with the theme Nurses Leading the Way. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th, 2014, as National Nurses Week in the city of Temple, Texas, and I encourage all citizens to join me in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us and to celebrate registered nursing's accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the state of Texas professional nurses in testimony whereof. I witness my hand in the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, this the first day of May 2014. There are a lot of big words in that. Just talk about any events that you have going on.
I'm Donna Finto.
It's working.
I'm the president of District 7, and this is my past president.
Debbie Harrison. And we have an upcoming event that we co-sponsor and co-work with Feast of Hope, and it will be May 31st at the Feeding Center on 3rd and Avenue G. We do wellness checks, and on that day, they will also have people doing haircuts, and any organizations that want to do triage there, they can do it that day. We'll provide them with hygiene kits, the homeless and needy, and we usually give them t-shirts and socks. That's our next event. In October, we're planning an education event.
CE Conference.
CE Conference that will take place in October, which is in the planning stages at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, ladies. And now I am going to throw an audible, and I'm going to go to item six because we've got somebody that needs to catch a plane back to California. So item six, a first reading in a public hearing. Hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing abandonment and conveyance of an alley located in Block 4, Rylander Edition, on the east side of North 12th Street between East Central Avenue and East Adams Avenue, and reserving a public drainage and utility easement in the entire abandoned right-of-way. Ms. Lary.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor, and the city council people. And tonight's request is scheduled also for second reading at the May 15th City Council. I have a picture on the screen of the site, and the yellow area is the approximate area of where the alley is. It is just on the east side of North 12th Street, and it's just north of East Central here, and then this is... To the north is East Adams Avenue. This is just survey that comes with the request, and it shows the exact boundary of the proposed alley abandonment area. Just to give you some background, the requested alley abandonment is to allow for redevelopment of this block. Because there are utilities in the alley area, buildings will not be allowed because of the existing utility lines. The utility providers were notified of this request. There are no objections to this alley abandonment as long as the existing utility lines are protected with the easement. The utility providers did let us know that if the existing utilities were rerouted out of the alley, then they would have no problems, and an easement would not be needed. Also, if this is approved, then conveyance would be subject to an appraisal, and so staff is recommending approval of the requested alley abandonment and conveyance, subject to reserving a utility easement if needed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, council. Are there any questions for Ms. Lary? All right. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Coleman, address 206 North 7th Street. I'm not really understanding what they're asking for here. What are they planning on putting in the alley? What is that... What exactly are they doing with the alley? I mean, if...
They're purchasing it so then they can redevelop the alleyway. It's just between those two... I mean, it's something that is fairly...
So is it like full of potholes and trash, and they're just looking to clean the area?
No, it's an abandoned alleyway.
Yes. The applicants own the property on both sides of the alley, so what they're wanting to do is have the alley abandoned so that they can develop the whole site. The buildings that are there will be just, you know, they will remain. It's just that they want the whole area to be under their ownership.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further comments? If there being no further comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Going back to the consent agenda, all items under this section, the consent agenda, are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. Council, this is item 4A through 5K. Are there any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration or discussion?
4D.
4D. So this is... I'll entertain a motion to approve item 4A through 5K minus 4D.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval as you read out.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. And item 4D, we're just going to table for the time being.
Need a motion to table?
Do we need a motion to table, or can we just table it? We'll just consider it tabled. On the regular agenda, item five, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the annexation of a 49.979 acre tract of land located between South P Ridge Road to the west and Old Waco Road to the east, abutting the city limits boundary to the north, situated within the Nancy Chant survey. Abstract number five, Bell County, Texas, known as the Plains at Riverside. And B, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance to take action on permanent zoning upon annexation of a tract of land consisting of a 49.979 acre, where 42.440 acres are proposed for single-family two district, and 7.539 acres are proposed for office two district as part of the proposed subdivision plat for the Plains at Riverside, located on the west side of the intersection of Old Waco Road and Riverside Trail. Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First, a brief presentation about the voluntary annexation request for the Plains at Riverside. And this is for an ordinance. This is the first reading for the annexation and then the rezoning as well. Just to orient you to the site, this is South P Ridge on the west and Old Waco Road on the east. A photo from Old Waco Road, survey showing the 49 acres. And just a recap of the steps thus far in the process. On March 20th, the petition request to proceed with the voluntary annexation was granted by city council, followed by public hearings on April 3rd and 4th. Of course, the zoning request will be heard tonight, but also was heard at PNZ on April 7th and the second reading scheduled for May 15th. South P Ridge and Old Waco Roads are not part of the annexation request. So for this portion, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Council, any questions? This time, I will open the public hearing up on both 5A and B. If anyone wishing to speak in... If anyone wishing to speaking, to speak on this matter would like to do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, I think Mr. Chandler also has a presentation on the zoning, if you want him to do that first.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Mayor, city council, I'll actually be doing the presentation for the rezoning, so I'll, some of this information will be a little redundant, so I'll go over this rather briefly or quickly on this. Again, the rezoning portion is from ag to Single Family Two and O2 districts. And the total property is about 49 acres. The Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan identifies the property as being within two future land use designations, both agriculture and suburban commercial. And again, this rezone is accompanying the annexation, which you just heard from Mr. Chandler. As you may recall, in, in March, the property to the north was reviewed and approved for zoning for Single Family Two. There was some neighborhood concerns, primarily with increased traffic along Poison Oak Road and South P Ridge as a result of the development for that property. And none of the area roads are funded through the city's 2019 Transportation Capital Improvements Plan, and there is concern about the, the current size and width of the, the roads in the immediate area. Just a basic map of the property, again, with the two zonings that are being requested, the proposed Single Family Two and the proposed O2. With the Future Land Use Plan, again, the property is within two designations, the pink being suburban commercial and the green being within the agricultural rural. The agricultural rural is primarily for areas that are without adequate services, and suburban commercial district is primarily for office, retail, and service uses. The SF2 portion, which would be in the agriculture, is, does not comply with the Future Land Use Just an overview of the thoroughfare plan, the property is identified here, and Old Waco Road comes down here, and South P Ridge along here. The South P Ridge is identified as a collector, Old Waco is identified as a major arterial, and Poison Oak, which currently, within the thoroughfare plan, does cross through the subject property. This is a conceptual alignment as a proposed minor arterial. Right-of-way dedication would be triggered through the plating process, but something like this, we are looking also at the impacts of that during the rezone process, as we did with the property to the north. Just an overview of the existing conditions and the proposed conditions for Poison Oak, South P Ridge, and Old Waco Road. Again, based on the current pavement width and what the pavement width would be proposed for, for a full build-out, and some of the dimensions are certainly for right-of-way as well as pavement width, a lot of these dimensions, as well as the alignment, are currently in discussion and in review by the city staff. Both water and sewer are available to the property, and again, the alignment shown by the green line of the proposed minor arterial of Poison Oak. Just some photographs of the property on-site, taken from Old Waco Road, as well as from South P Ridge Road. To the south and north, to the south particularly, scattered single-family homes, these are within ETJ, and currently to the north, this is the property that went through the, the rezoning in March, currently has Single Family Two and the ag zoning. And to the east and west, both scattered, single-family homes and undeveloped, these are both within ETJ, and in the case of the west, there is some ag zoning to the west. The SF2 does primarily for single-family uses, but there are non, non-residential uses that are permitted. Prohibited uses typically would include retail and commercial uses. There are some residential uses, as well as HUD code manufactured homes that are prohibited. Within the O2, single-family residential uses are permitted, and the O2 does permit non-residential, such as your retail and service uses, offices and restaurant, similar uses. Prohibited uses in the O2 also include the HUD code manufactured, as well as commercial and industrial uses. Single-family development standards, your standard 500 by, or 50 by 100-sized lot, these are 5,000 square foot minimum lots, and standard residential setbacks. The, the O2 does provide for residential setbacks, particularly adjacent to residential zoning or residential uses, and there are some additional setbacks and outdoor storage restrictions that are provided for in the UDC. Staff sent out 11 notices of the rezoning. Staff did not receive any letters from the neighbors in either opposition or agreement for the proposed rezone. Just an overall summary, again, the Future Land Use Plan, there's partial compliance, the SF2-zoned property does not comply because of the agricultural district. The, the request is compatible with surrounding uses and zoning, utilities are provided, and there's partial compliance with the thoroughfare plan, primarily with the current size and width of the existing right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of the request for a rezone from ag to SF2 and O2. And at their April 7th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted nine to zero to recommend, recommend approval of the request, requested rezone with the following recommendation, that, that there was approval of the 42.4 acres for SF2 as requested, and the 7.5 acres would be within the planned development Office Two, and that would prohibit the residential uses within that O2 portion. As a planned development, council has the authority to add additional standards. Also, as part of the planned development, a site plan is required, and that site plan would be coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the city council, for final review. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Council?
Did I hear you say, within that O2 zoning, that it would not allow residential uses in that PD?
The straight O2 would allow, but the, the, the planned development O2 did have the caveat of prohibiting the residential uses.
So no duplexes, triplexes?
No duplexes, triplexes.
So if, if approved as written, would that be the case?
If, if it was approved as recommended by the planning commission, or as approved as requested?
As requested. I guess what's, what's on our, our agenda here. I don't see the PD on here. It just says basically O2 and SF2, so we would have to add the, the PD?
Correct.
Right.
The original request was for straight O2, which would allow the residential uses.
At this time, I will try again and open the public hearing on both 5A and 5B. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Council, your pleasure on the, on the first reading of these ordinances. There's no further discussion, is there a motion for item 5A?
I've got, I've got a quick question.
No, sure, go ahead.
Is the applicant here, do we know what he's using this O2 zoning for, the 7.53 acres?
Mayor and council, Victor Turley, 301 North 3rd, I'm the engineer for the applicant. The O2 has not been defined. That was a part of the request by city staff for land abutting Old Waco. So to answer your question, no, there has not been any plans, site plans, or anything of that nature developed at this time.
Is there any intention as far as duplexes in the O2, or townhouses, or anything like in the O2? Reason I'm saying it, Mr. Turley, is we've, we've kind of been pretty consistent in that quarter, the council has, as far as the O2, asking the applicants kind of their desires, what they're going to do in O2, the O2 area.
I think the applicant is agreeable to that restriction to, to the PD. So yes, they're agreeable to that.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll now entertain a motion on item 5A.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for item 5A for the first reading on the ordinance authorizing annexation of 49.979 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Now, is there a motion on, for item 5B?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on 5, item 5B, to allow the change from, from ag to SF2 on 49.97 acres, and to allow the change from ag to Office Two on 7.539 acres with the addition to the Office Two to disallow residential uses in that area, particularly duplexes and triplexes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Item seven, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezone from agricultural district to light industrial district on 44.20 acres, situated in the Mercer Phalen survey, abstract 659, and the JW Christian survey, abstract 1070, Bell County, Texas, located at the southwest corner of Northwest Loop 363 and Pegasus Drive, and addressed as 4222 Pegasus Drive. Mr. Baker?
Thank you again, Mayor, city council. Again, the request is from general agriculture to light industrial, and the applicant is Aldrich Thomas Group on behalf of Ranger Excavating, which will be for the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 7th, and will be scheduled for a second reading on May 15th. The comprehensive plan and future land use plan does identify the property as within the industrial district. And just an overview of the zoning and location of the property, Pegasus Drive to the east and Dodgin Loop to the north. Property is primarily surrounded by light industrial and some commercial that's already in place. Future land use plan, the property again is identified here by the blue boundary and is entirely within the industrial designation. That, the request is consistent with the future land use plan. Property is also, or the request is also consistent with the thoroughfare plan. Property is shown designated in this area. The property is within the northwest industrial park, which does not require sidewalks also, and the property is in compliance with the thoroughfare plan. Utilities are available to the property, both by water and sewer. Just some photographs of the site and surrounding area. This is looking south from, from Dodgin Loop. Looking to the north, this is also zoned agriculture. To the south is developed industrial uses. And to the east and west, there's also scattered industrial and commercial uses and undeveloped light industrial land. Light industrial does permit some residential uses, restricting primarily the, the single-family detached and attached, and primarily cater to non-residential, such as an auto storage, boat sales, truck stop, fuel sales. Prohibited uses primarily your single-family, your apartments, and your manufactured housing. Light industrial development standards primarily with a front yard setback of 30 feet. Staff sent out eight notices, one was received, which was covering two proper, or was for two properties. Future land use plan, compatible surrounding uses and zoning, the utility plan and the thoroughfare plan, the request does have compliance with all of those. Staff is recommending approval of the request for a rezone from ag to light industrial, and Planning and Zoning Commission, their April 7th meeting, voted nine to zero, recommending approval in accordance with staff's recommendation. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Council, any questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Coleman, 206 North 7th Street. Just a quick question, is this land already owned by the city? I'm sorry? Who is this land owned by that they're going to use? For it to go from ag to li. The Ranger Excavating, I believe, is the current property owner. We have not received any kind of site plan for that development, though. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like a farmer or anything that was having his land taken from him, just trying to make sure that's, you know, doesn't happen here in Texas. Happens in Nevada, sir.
I think we're safe.
You never know. Check the Red River, 90,000 acres.
All right, anyone else? All right, there being no further comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Cloud?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Item eight, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance for a site plan review, amending ordinance number 2001-2748, originally approved, March 1st, 2001, planned development, Neighborhood Service District, and further amended by ordinance number 2012-4519, March 15th, 2012, on Lot 2, Block 1, Johnson Lone Star Properties Edition, located at 7950 State Highway 317. There are a lot of dashes in there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to give you a little bit more background, this is for a proposed Phase 2 for Amy's Attic Mini Storage Complex, and the property was zoned PD NS in 2001, allowing the mini storage, and that included actually this Lot 2, as well as Lot 1, which includes the Phase 1. So it has the zoning, you all are seeing it because of the amendment to the site plan to allow for the second phase. The site plan was amended in, in 2012 as well to accommodate RV storage, yet the proposal for the second phase does not include RV storage. And just to orient you to the site, here you have 317 to the east, and of course, in the aerial, you can see Lot 1, and the existing Amy's Attic storage facilities. To the west, you can see Windmill Farms, Single Family Subdivision, and so Lot 2 here is, is where the proposed Phase 2 would, would be located. Zoning map, just confirming that it's zoned NS. To the north, also zoned NS for neighborhood services, and ag to the east, and also NS to the south, SF2 to the west. Existing photo of the site, so you can see the proposed phase would match, the masonry of the existing storage buildings, landscape would, would be consistent as well. And so here is Lot 2 on the property, currently undeveloped. To the north, other commercially zoned property. Property to the east is undeveloped. A church immediately, immediately to the south of that piece of property, also on the other side of 317. And then the property immediately to the south of Lot 2, also on the west side of 317, is currently undeveloped. And here's an example of one of the houses from the existing neighborhood to the west. And to the... And to the site and landscape plan. So just to give you a quick orientation, of course, this is the existing Phase 1. You have a proposed detention pond in the Phase 2 down here. Landscaping, as I mentioned, along 317 would match. Two-inch caliper oak trees. Also includes a 15-inch, or excuse me, 15-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property that would include eight-foot privacy fence for screening, and will also preserve a natural landscape buffer for additional screening. Here's a close-up of that landscape buffer and a note confirming the eight-foot privacy fence. Of course, the landscaping along 317, you can see those notes. Forty-five notices were mailed out to property owners within 200 feet. Three were returned in agreement, including from the applicant, and four in disagreement, which you can see where those folks reside. Staff recommends approval of the site plan amendment due to the fact that an eight-foot fence is proposed adjacent to the single-family residences for screening, and a 15-foot natural landscape buffer will be retained as well. And at the April 7th meeting, PNZ recommended unanimous approval. And the applicant is here as well, if you had any additional questions.
I might ask the applicant a question, but it seems to me that when we passed the first phase in 2012, there was not only the eight-foot fence, but there was also, I think, either retaining wall, or there was a little additional height between, I mean, when you were in your backyard and in Windmill Farms, you weren't looking, I mean, you couldn't look directly onto the storage facility. If that's correct.
That is correct. And if I speak out of turn stand, you can jump in, but my understanding is that Phase 1, there is some topographical changes that have required a retaining wall now, but also eliminated the possibility to be able to do any additional planting and to provide additional fencing. And so this is a little bit more level, that's my understanding, but the eight-foot privacy fence and the screening will certainly mitigate the impact on the neighbors.
Who maintains the landscape buffer and what is it going to be between the fence and the residence? I can see that being a problem.
Right. And that was discussed, and that's one of the beauties of a Plan Development District, there's a little more negotiation that can be done. A lot of discussion was done with the applicant about, you know, how that would be addressed. They would maintain it, but that's where the decision was made by the applicant to be able to provide, just preserve the existing vegetation that includes trees. And so that way, it's native and it already provides some screening and therefore would be easier to maintain as well.
Thank you.
No mowing required, or?
Not on the rear side. They have, along other parts of the property, that will be planted and sotted and irrigated. But, you know, in terms of the area between the existing single-family neighborhood, you know, to the rear and back corner, that'll remain native.
Counsel, any further questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. Just please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Coleman, 206 North 7th Street here in Temple. I saw where you had four people that were against it and three people for it. Where four of those people, or three of the four people that were against it were at, it looks like what that property is going to do, it's going to take away any good-looking landscape that they may have to look onto either in your front yard or their backyard. I think if they disapprove of what you're going to do around their property, I don't think you should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
This will have another reading the next, councilmate, correct?
Correct. Item 9, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from Agricultural District to Commercial District on 11.579 acres, being part of Lot 1, Block 1, DRS Edition, located at 111 Hart Road.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As was indicated in the caption, this is a rezoning request from Ag Agricultural District to C for Commercial District for less than 12-acre piece of property. I'll show you some exhibits in a second, but in terms of compliance with the future land use plan, it is compliant because it's identified as suburban commercial, and so C would comply with that request. And the purpose of the request is for a billboard relocation, forced to relocate because of the TexDOT project. Now, the current use on the property is an RV park, which the current zoning district, Agricultural District, does prohibit. However, the RV park did get a conditional use permit in 2001 to allow the RV park, which would continue until the property is redeveloped. At that time, it would have to comply with permitted uses table for C District and also the development standards. So here's the subject property highlighted in yellow. You can see on the west is Pegasus Drive. Hart Road is to the north, and of course, I-35 to the east. Future land use plan, which was alluded to before, pink indicates the suburban commercial, and so the C would comply with that request. And in terms of the utilities and thoroughfare plan shown on this aerial, to the north, Hart Road is actually along the proposed outer loop and is shown as an arterial. Pegasus Drive is also shown as an arterial to the west, and water and sewer are available as well. There's a photo of the RV park. Property to the north, which is also zoned commercial. Undeveloped property to the south. And to the west, also undeveloped and zoned Ag. That's property owned by the city. And then commercial and undeveloped property are immediately across I-35 from the site. And so in the future, upon redevelopment, whenever that happens, the C District would allow detached, single-family residences, industrialized housing as well. In terms of non-residential uses allowed, mini storage, truck stop, fuel sales, alcohol, beverage sales, beer and wine only. Prohibited uses include manufactured housing. And in terms of the development standards, a front yard setback of 30 feet upon redevelopment would be required. Three notices were mailed out and none returned. It complies with the future land use plan. It's compatible with surrounding uses. Utility plan shows that utilities are available and also is compliant with the thoroughfare plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to Commercial District, and PNZ recommended unanimous approval at their April 7th meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counsel, any questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Coleman, 206 North 7th Street. Just a quick question. When you said that if it's, if this goes through, you said that the park where people may be living there, that it would change things for them. Would this close down the RV park altogether?
No, it would not. The RV park would be considered a legally non-conforming use and continues until they decide to stop business. But this will not affect the ability for the RV park to continue.
Okay. And it doesn't affect anybody that live there, nothing like that? Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment? All right. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 10, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance on a conditional use permit to allow an off-premise sign, a billboard, on a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, DRS Edition, located at 111 Hart Road, Temple, Texas.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. For the same piece of property, the C was for the zoning to allow for the relocation of the billboard. This is a CUP to allow for a deviation from the standards regulating off-premise signs or billboards in Section 7.6 of the UDC. And that regulation is the 1,500-foot spacing requirement between billboards along I-35. This is less than that 1,500-foot requirement. And here's a survey of the property, the existing RV park. And you can see that in pink, that is the proposed location of the billboard. And this is an exhibit provided by Lamar, the applicant, showing signs in the corridor that have been removed or relocated. And at the top, the green pen is the RV park and the proposed location. And so zoomed in, this is the site indicated by the X and the distancing from the nearest billboards, which is 750 feet to the north and 1,300 feet to the south. And this exhibit just confirms compliance with the other standards within the UDC, including now the zoning after first reading. And so here's a graphic showing the RV park and where the billboard will sit on the site. And once again, three notices were mailed out. This time, one of the neighbors returned a notice in disagreement, but did not indicate from which property they reside or own. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit since the billboard does meet all of our other standards, and this is for a relocation of an existing billboard by the TexDOT project. And PNZ recommended unanimous approval at their April 7th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counsel, any questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Please, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, just step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 11, first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Animals and Fowls, Section 613, additional regulations to allow the keeping of miniature swine within the city of Temple in accordance with certain provisions. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The item before you denied, to give you a little background, you had some public comments recently regarding our current swine ordinance, and as a result of that, you've asked staff to look into potential amendments to that ordinance. Staff did research on various other ordinances from cities throughout Texas that do allow miniature swine and developed a potential amendment for your consideration. The draft amendment was submitted to the Animal Services Advisory Board at their last meeting on April 14th. Tonight, we're scheduled for a public hearing and for your consideration of a potential amendment to the ordinance on first reading. As a reminder, the current ordinance does allow swine in very limited circumstances. They may be kept in a pen or enclosure as long as it's on attractive land containing at least 10 acres that is zoned agricultural, and that pen must be at least 500 feet from the nearest property line. Those are the only conditions that swine are currently allowed within the city limits. A potential amendment, you might consider the following provisions, that the swine be no more than 18 inches high at the shoulder and three feet long and weigh more than, no more than 75 pounds. We would suggest you consider that this swine must be spayed or neutered, and that documentation of such be provided upon request. That annual vaccinations would be required, that there would be a maximum of two swine allowed per household or business, and that the location where the swine are kept must be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition. Again, the Animal Services Advisory Board did consider this recommendation. While they ultimately voted four to two to recommend no changes to the current ordinance, they did review the proposed or the potential amendments, and that's what I just presented to you, is what their suggestions to you would be if you choose to make an amendment to the ordinance. Next up, again, we're scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and then if you so wish, we would hold the second reading at the May 15th council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Counsel, any questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Coleman, 206 North 7th Street. I think with the way, with the proposed ordinances, I think this is a good idea. It's good for students who are in FFA, 4H, the things that they do in those activities in school. This would allow them to excel in that part of life, and I think it's a very good idea. I, however, am not in agreeance with the gentleman earlier. I don't think other property owners should have the right to tell another property owner what they can do with their own property. I believe that the zoning or the rules you put in place are good enough. I don't think that somebody else should be able to dictate what I do on my land. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Richard Wooden, 711 Von Lane, and I would like to speak against amending the ordinance. I live in what I consider a nice neighborhood and have a nice backyard, and I chose to live in the city because I don't want to live near farm animals. Although a public pig is not really considered a farm animal, it is a pig. They can get very large in excess of 200 pounds. Unless you set up a mandatory check of the people that have a pig, how are you going to know that they're going to stay at 75 pounds? How are you going to know they're going to keep their area until nice and clean? Keep their area nice and clean? You're going to leave it to the neighbors to always have to call and complain and hope the police come out and do something about it. Again, I chose to live in the city in a nice neighborhood so I wouldn't have to live near cows, pigs, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Milton Hesley with 301 Metro Drive. Again, I am not in favor of this type of animal being in the city limits of Temple, especially next door to my house. A 75-pound dog, that's a limit. That's not very big for a hog. It just isn't. If it's a show animal, I mean, they're just starting at that. They go on up. With the gentleman, how... With the gentleman, how are we going to keep a monitor on this? How many are you going to allow? With each one of these places we're looking at tonight, the property owners around had a choice. Some of them made a statement, others didn't. I think that the people, this is serious, I think, to have a hog coming into your neighborhood. We don't allow chickens, and I'd whole lot rather hear a rooster crowing than have a hog living next to my house. That's all there is to it. I much rather have a rooster crowing. I think it sounds real good. The hog walking next door to me doesn't sound good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counsel, any further questions or discussion?
I've got some comments. I actually brought this, not me personally brought this item to the council, but one of my constituents did. And this is not primarily for raising a farm animal, raising an FFA project, or having a hog in your backyard even. This is about pets. Some prefer dogs, some prefer cats, and as I found out, there's several of them prefer pigs, pot-bellied pigs, in their house, living in their house. They tell me it's a very clean animal. It's an indoor pet for several residents that's actually contacted me after this island came to play here. I do think there needs to be some restrictions on it. I think one of the restrictions needs to be as an indoor pet and not living out in the yard, causing hog wallers. Or, Mr. Henley, I know, again, how hog could be disruptive to the neighbor as far as out in the yard and as a farm animal, but I don't believe this is not designed for a farm animal. It's designed for a pet and a companion. That sounds kind of interesting, but that's exactly what it is. And as I understand it, and I'm not a professional in pot-bellied pigs, but I've learned a lot about it the last couple of months, and I don't think they're raising them for show. They're not raising them for sale. They're not raising them for slaughter. They're raising them as a pet and a companion. So, I really don't see this as anything different than a cow, cat, or a cat, or a dog, or an indoor pet. I would say that it requires two readings, and we may need to, in between this reading and the next reading, I may need to hone in on size and weight and that type of deal. But I would like to go back to the recommendations of the potential change. I would like to, I would like to leave the, make us in a form of motion, Mayor, that we would change the ordinance and basically let it read that miniature swine would be allowed for the following provisions, no more than 18 inches high, 3 foot long, 75 pounds. I don't think we need to leave the spayed and neutered. I don't know that we make other residents with cats and dogs, they have to be spayed or neutered. I don't think that's a requirement to have a pet. So, I need to, I want to remove that. I believe in the, I want to keep the annual vaccination, the maximum two per household, and also, under the location, I would like to have that read indoors, if that's possible. So, basically changing two of the things, removing the spade and changing the location where they're kept to be indoors.
And Councilmember, if I may, the reason that we're recommending that spaying be required is that unneutered male, specifically hogs, are very aggressive. So, it's generally recommended that they be neutered. But certainly, you know...
All right. Let's keep it in there then.
Or, and maybe, if I may suggest, we provide some additional, do some additional research and provide some information between now and next meeting on that.
Yeah, let's leave it in there, just indoors. And, Mr. Hensley, I don't believe that our animal control people or any of our code people are actually, with the exception of some areas, that we have enough officers to drive around and look for these things. This is pretty much brought to us from a neighbor. They're not doing what they're supposed to be, they're not keeping it properly, and those types of things, and that's when we typically go look at these things. So, I think that, you know, with neighbors, if this goes through, the neighbors would have to kind of police that. If it gets out of hand, then we could actually do something about it if we have some parameters for that. So, with that, I make a motion for approval with this the one change now.
All right. And I'll just say before I ask for a second, I've heard from, I'm surprised at the amount of people that I've heard from regarding this issue, both for and against, and I agree with you, this is, I think, an opportunity for us to regulate something that is already going on. So, do we have a motion?
That was my motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Quill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 12, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one, financing and project plans to appropriate additional tax increment revenue expenditures for downtown improvements, public improvements, and debt service for fiscal years 2014 through 2033. Ms. Bernard.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. First, to address a question that was asked earlier. Under Chapter 311 of the Local Government Code, under which the tax increment financing zone is created, it requires that a reinvestment zone have a financing plan and a project plan that extends through the life of the reinvestment zone. And our current reinvestment zone's life expires in the year 2062, but the amendment before you tonight does extend through 2033, and that relates to the debt service that was issued back last July, and it goes through, it's a 20-year debt through 2033. Next slide, please. The amendment that, before you, that impacts FY 2014 recognizes revenue of $754,141. The allocation of that revenue is to adjust the debt service for year 2014. Allocation of that revenue to downtown improvements, and then the remainder would roll into fund balance as unallocated. And the amendment that impacts year 2015 through 2033 in total, it varies from year to year, but the total over those 17, 18 years is 1.5 million, and that was a reallocation from public improvements as general unallocated. Next slide, please. Just brief summary on the revenue. The plan was last adopted in May of 2013. The revenue was based on an estimate, and a portion, the 268,000 of the 754, is to adjust from an estimate. And then, the other 485,000 is related to the correction of the increment value that was allocated to taxing entities versus the reinvestment zone. Next slide, please. And then, the additional 500,000 that's added to the downtown improvements rail safety zone is to fund the remainder of that project, and the estimated, total estimate on that project is $857,029. And that is, again, funded from the additional tax increment. Within your packets, you do have the financing plan and project plan. Next slide. With that, I'll be happy to answer any, address any questions related to the amendment.
Counsel, any questions? It's time I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
John Coleman, 206 North 7th. What is the project plan that you have planned for the future for downtown? I mean, is there something that we can look at?
We have one in, that's in the middle of being developed right now. And so, I mean, we have some things that you're welcome to look at, and we can get you a copy of something.
Again, I was just trying to figure out what the plan is for what's going to be done downtown. How have you advertised any of that outside of Temple? I'm certain you probably have, but is to, what can you do to create an investment that people will want to come here for and do something downtown, giving limited location, limited parking, and things like that, where it would be a viable project over a long period of time? You know, I've been here for a long time, and it's, everything has been tried, really has not been successful for the most part, in my opinion, and I'm just trying to figure out where you see your growth going out of town instead of downtown. I know a lot of revitalization projects that are tried, and a lot of cities are like throwing money down a well that has no bottom to it, you know? And I'm just trying to make sense of, you know, what is the common sense project plans that you have that'll be a viable project, that will stay here, and also, people will be able to get here and get in and get out and have good use of downtown as we have it now.
Mr. Coleman, one project we talked about, I believe, two weeks ago, was the Hawn. There's a private individual actually looking at that building and that facility and doing analysis of it as far as the, a study of it to invest lots of money into that particular building, his personal money and investment, which I think would be a big attraction and some other things to feed off of. That's a huge potential project there that could be a center of growth there. So, we, you know, we're trying to bring that, and that has some different uses that we're not quite accustomed to. But that project there is going to be an interesting project, some theater with Arcadia. So, that's a huge consideration there. It's not a done deal, but they're making headway. We had a presentation and workshop last council meeting, and it's going to be a, it's going to be a nice facility if it all goes well there. So, that's one significant project that could be a part of downtown.
And along with that, we would have additional parking to service those that, for the redevelopment of that.
Yeah. I know a lot of people looked at that over the years and trying to make that a viable project, but I've seen that sort of thing work, you know, in your bigger cities, where you have more downtown business and firms that are willing to invest in things like that. I would, you know, I'm glad that they're considering trying to do it. Hopefully, it'll be successful, but Temple being quite a bit smaller than these larger cities that have tried it, I'll just say good luck to him. He's going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Chris Coleman, 206 North 7th. Is this going to cause, like, property taxes and things like that to go up in Temple, on the residents of Temple? Is this going to raise taxes with paying more on, I guess, utilities or property taxes or anything like that? How is this going to affect the citizens of Temple?
Now, the idea of growing the tax base is so that we can try to keep the taxes low. So...
It's not going to raise taxes on the people?
No, sir. I mean, this is, I mean, basically, I mean, as Ms. Bernard said, one of the reasons that we're doing this is that we have, we have a surplus of what we got last year based on what we thought we were going to get, which is a good thing. So, if we're able to spend that money on redevelopment and entice people to come to the area, then we're able to keep, you know, we're hopefully able to keep it low.
So, basically, what's happening is you're bringing in more revenue, and because you bring in more revenue, you lower taxes. Is that how it works?
One would hope.
One would hope.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's the plan. That's what we all...
My only worry is, you know, with the economy the way it is today, and people are very able to make their taxes every year, I just, you know, if things were going to go up on people, I mean, it's already hard enough, as it is, not to add to it. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. So, there being no further comments, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Quill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.